Please try to limit yourself to about three minutes. And remember to stay on subject, not your personal feelings. We have someone who'd like to go first.
Hello, members of the board. Sorry, I haven't done this before, I'm a little nervous. Bear with me. But I wrote a note that I emailed in to you and I can give you.
Have identified yourself?
My name is Jay Neidick, I live at 154 Blind Pond Road.
Make sure Amy can get that.
And what was your last name? Neidick. It's N Y, but New York, D I C K. Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna read my, my note, I hope it's gonna keep it short. Members of the board, as a property owner very close to the proposed Boba ship, Boba Yeshiva educational retreat at 189 Blind Pond Road, I'm especially concerned with making sure that the site is developed in a way that respects the rural character of the area and ensures the safety of the prospective owners' personnel as well as the other people in the area. After having reviewed the full environmental assessment form, parts one, two, and three, I have many questions and concerns regarding the proposal. The F E A notes that the lead agencies or viewers may not be environmental professionals, and in light of some of the questions regarding the self, self-reported information in part one of the F E A, I request that an environmental impact statement be required to be prepared and that the public hearing not be closed for this project until the final environmental impact statement has been submitted and reviewed. The request for a special use permit to use the property as an educational retreat mentions approximately 150 students, but makes no mention of the number of educators, staff, or any attendant family members who may accompany them. Can we have clarity on the double number personnel expected at the site? These additional personnel will significantly increase the occupancy of the site beyond the 150 student standing room. This internal also the environmental impact of the site and particularly the water use and waste treatment requirements of the site. The proposed use is radically different from the recent use of the site. Under the ownership of the Gerger Foundation for the past 25 years or so, the site has been used very infrequently by small groups for short periods of time. It has not been occupied by the volume of people proposed now since the Wellmet Camp stopped operating over 25 years ago, maybe as much as 40 years ago. I can't really get a clear number on that, but definitely 20, over 25 years ago. Without a full professional evaluation of the site, it cannot be assumed that the systems that were used 25 years ago are still adequate for the volume of proposed use now, nor can be assumed that the impact of being on the environment around it will be minimal. Below, following are my questions and comments on the F E A, and I'm referencing the sections outlined in part two. Part two, section three, impacts on surface water. I question whether there will be no impacts on the surface water as reported in section three. According to the site plan, there will be construction of 895 square foot additions to two bungalows that are very close to the banks of Silver Lake and also near the dam and spillway. In addition, the site includes 26.2 acres of wetlands, though the wetlands don't appear to be noted on the site plan. I'd like to know when the last wetlands delineation survey was performed, and based on that, I'd like to know where the wetlands are on the property and whether they're in an affected zone. Section four, impact on groundwater. I have concerns about the no answer to this question. The F E A part one, section D two C, states that there will be no increase in demand for water because showers are being moved from bunkhouse to mikva. However, there appears to be also a new shower house on the site plan at the proposed new swimming pool location. Have the new owners made an estimate of the water use per day based on their, their proposed use? Notwithstanding the numbers of showers for the last 25 years or more, the site has been used infrequently and by few people. Occupancy by 150 students plus the attendant staff members and personnel will certainly create additional demand on existing water supply. C D P A WaterSense statistics, which have attached to my note, state that the average water use per person in the USA is 82 gallons per day. It's certain that increasing the number of people on site will increase the water demanding incrementally. On top of the increased personnel, there will be a new swimming pool and mikva, which will both increase the water demand. Have the wells been tested to ensure that they can handle the increased demand? The depth of the water table is not noted where it's asked for in the F E A part one. Will this increased demand affect the water table and therefore the wells on neighboring properties? Has there, has there been a directional flow of water survey to assess the impact on neighboring properties? The F E A part one states that 95% of the site is on poorly drained soil. What type of septic system is planned? Are the existing proposed leach fields, existing or proposed leach fields on poorly drained soil? And what will, and will that have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer? Or to incur contaminated runoff? Will the soil drainage? And this potential issue be assessed? Section 13, impact on transportation. The F E A part two answers no to any significant impact on transportation. However, based on the proposed large parking lot near the proposed swimming pool and the proposed large bus parking lot along Ryer Road, the site is preparing for a significant amount of traffic coming and going from the property. This is not surprising as students and personnel will need to be transported to and from the property. Food and goods will need to be delivered, garbage will need to be removed, et cetera. It seems possible, though, that traffic in the area will be increased not insignificantly, but exponentially. This is a remote, remote rural area and currently has extremely light traffic. The roads are narrow and windy. All the public roads that the property borders on are undivided and unlit. They currently have very limited traffic. There are no sidewalks, no lighting, or even shoulders wide enough for people to walk on without walking on the actual road in the path of traffic. An inability to walk or ride a bicycle safely on the local roads will certainly impact the quality of life and the bioplastic character of the area. Will, will there be an assessment of the impact of this increased traffic on the small roads in the vicinity of the site? Will there be a safety assessment for pedestrians and bicyclists? Section 16, impact on human health. Section L asks if the proposed action may result in the release of contaminated leach aid from the project site. I refer back to my comments of section four and ask again if the leach fields will be or already situated on areas of soil with poor drainage. Could that cause contaminants to be released into the groundwater or an aquifer? How will that be assessed and addressed if necessary? In relation to the proposed new construction, the site map notes that the proposed mikva will be a 40 foot by 60 foot two-story building of 2,400 square feet. Two stories of 2,400 square feet each would be a 4,800 square foot building, which is quite a big building. And can we, can we get that clarified? Is it a 4,800 square foot building or a 2,400 square foot building? I thank you in advance for reviewing my questions and look forward to further clarity on the proposal. Whatever the planning board permits on any given project sets a precedent for all other projects to come. If this project doesn't hold to the highest standard of our zoning code and community standards, it will be difficult to hold any future projects to a high standard. It is of paramount importance to ensure that this site is planned and built in a way that ensures the safety of the environment and the ongoing health and welfare of the occupants of the property and of the neighbors. Part three, section A of the F E A states that, he quotes, "The project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared." I very respectfully disagree and remind the board that the site and neighborhood of this project have changed and have not experienced anything close to the proposed use in a generation. I ask you again that the appropriate testing be done and a thorough environmental impact statement be required before any special use permit is issued and that the public hearing not be closed for this project until these have been submitted, reviewed, and approved. So, thank you very much. Can I? Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Okay, start.
Well, I think this lady just summarized much more than I was even kind of down or prepared to say, but my main concern, I heard very nicely outlined in what she did say, which is the environmental impact, the increase of traffic and the possible variations or violations of the kind of area that we live in and other things like the traffic that will be using, breaking up the roads, causing a danger of pedestrians walking along the road and in town. I, I hope that whatever you do, listen to this presentation, take all of those concerns into consideration because I'm, I'm not just here for me. There were several people that wanted to come tonight and were just as much concerned about these things, and they just couldn't make it. So, I'm here representing other people who couldn't make it, and please keep that in mind that quite a few people have concerns about the way this project goes forward and the impact that's gonna have. Nothing should be done on, on putting this in any kind of a labor situation or allowance to building exception unless all of these areas that we just mentioned are checked off and completely okay under all the various regulations. Thank you.
Star S, star S, H E S S A. Sorry, I knew who you were and I didn't. Who's next? Okay.
Naomi Holoch.
Spell your name for A I B, please.
H O O C H. I would just like to urge the board to consider not moving forward, but rather instead without an impact statement. It seems to me, it seems to me that there's a vested interest in not doing an impact statement, so the, the, the interested parties to say it's not needed. It seems to me that that shouldn't be taken at face value, that an independent source really has to do that because it is a very different use from what it's been, and it would definitely impact the area. That's it. But please, please get the impact statement done.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Max Lerner. I also submitted some information to you by email shortly before the meeting. I'll keep it brief. I'm a professional environmental scientist by trade. There are several species of interest in the region, and there's just simply not enough information about the property on record. B C's never inspected Silver Lake. There's a large marsh on the site as well that's never inspected, and that's just how it goes. It's a massive parcel of land, it's over 170 acres. There really needs to be an environmental impact statement released. There needs to be a formal assessment of the property because we just simply can't say what species are living on this site, what of interest is in the location until we do a proper review of it. There's just no public record or official documentation otherwise, but there's ample evidence of these species existing in and around the area in Tustin. I've lived next to this site for nearly 20 years, coming here, very, very minimal use, and this is an order of magnitude more essentially use on the site. So, it's inevitable that there will be an increase in the disturbance to local natural systems. So, as many of other people have said, urge that a formal environmental impact assessment is done.
Did you get the name, Amy?
Max.
Max Lerner. Thank you. And I submitted a long form email to all of you.
Concur with the previous speakers. I'm a next door neighbor for Jay, Jay Neidick, the third speaker. Her name is Jason Simon. I'm at 166 Blind Pond Road. I've been there since 1999. And I'll read my statement. Our house at 166 Blind Pond Road will be one of the closest property to this proposed project. You know, very concerned about the potential changes it presents. Overuse of the water table, discharge from buildings and leaching fields, impacts upon wildlife, light and noise pollution, traffic, and other adverse effects must be assessed by unbiased and recognized experts, not left to the applicant's own non-binding assurances. The town board must hold the owners to the highest standard for such a potentially expansive development. We would like to see a full environmental review of all aspects of this project before any approvals are issued by the town. Thank you.
Who's next? Anybody over that way? No, be this way. Okay.
Members of the board, my name is Gerald Burner. My wife Jay Neidick and I own a concept 154 Blind Pond Road. It's perhaps one of six or eight properties within 300 feet of the proposed development. We've owned the property for over 20 years and purchased it shortly after the Gerger Foundation bought the property from the former camp home to use as a retreat. Aside from the lake conference center building, the Gerger Foundation have added very little of the property. Place was used occasionally for weekend retreats and pottery workshops by perhaps 50 people at a time. In the past 20 years, I've never observed more than 20 cars on the property during these weekends. According to the documents filed by the applicant, Rose's use initially will be a study center for 150 boys. They failed to even mention any additional persons aside from 150 students in their application, which is most concerning since obviously there will be a significant number of teachers and their families, support staff and their families, as well as visitors, guests, using the asylum facilities at a minimum. Using the figures from the Yeshiva's website that claim that there is a nine to one student teacher ratio with their families and other necessary support staff that would double the number of occupants at a minimum, thereby doubling the water usage and sewage generated. This doesn't even consider the potential for periodic high water demand and sewage generated by visitors or special events. The E P estimates water usage at 80 gallons per day per person or 12,000 gallons of water used by the 150 students without the additional water used or mikvas, swimming pool, or any other exceptional water consuming activity and not including any water used by teachers, staff, visitors, or anyone else using the property. All of that water will come from multiple new wells they are proposing and elaborate water treatment systems. The sewage generated will also need to be treated and discharged in multiple new septic systems and additional leaching fields. The soil in the area contains a lot of clay, is poorly drained, so contamination from surface runoff from leaching fields into wells, streams, wetlands, and ponds is a serious concern. The fact that the applicants state there is no significant change in water usage or sewage generated over the formerly used by 50 people on weekends raises an obvious red flag. After speaking to former campers who went to Wellmet, they said they mostly lived in platform tents, used outhouses, and bathed in the lake. So, obvious campers at Wellmet didn't use 80 gallons of water a day each. The 50 or so people who were using the lake conference center when the Gerger Foundation was operating there certainly didn't use 12,000 gallons of water a day. Obviously, the proposed development of the site with toilets of 4,800 square foot mikva, swimming pool, bathhouse require water consumption many orders of magnitude greater than the former camp Wellmet with the Gerger Foundation. So, the applicants claim that their proposed new, no use will require no additional water use or septic discharge is patently false. In light of these blatant misrepresentations on their application, I requested the board require a study of the aquifer to ensure that it is adequate to meet the needs of the proposed development without impacting on surrounding properties. Also, a thorough study of wetlands on the property and adjacent properties, as well as a study of potential light pollution, traffic, leaching field discharge, noise pollution, to determine whether proposed new development will have any significant detrimental attack effect on the surrounding properties or wildlife. There is no mention of the number of teachers, administrators, staff, and their families that will be there. No mention of whether the use will be seasonal or year round, or whether there will be any permanent housing for visitors, renters, or permanent residents. Judging by the area of multiple bus and car parking lots, there will certainly be a large number of vehicles on the property, since the students will likely not have cars. That is a clear indication of substantial number of staff and other adults will be using the property, furthering adding to the potential one septic issues, as well as obvious significant increase in traffic on the winding, unlit roads. Our well is only 65 feet deep, but is adequate for our family, providing there is no significant depletion of the water table from neighboring properties. The soil contains a lot of clay, drains poorly, so our shower well and pond could easily become contaminated. Multiple leaching fields on the property at a higher elevation than ours. The leaching fields could also potentially impact our pond, and many acres of wetlands will fall to lead to beyond the applicant's property. In the adjacent 10-mile river boy scout camp, as well as a stream that exits the lake and is, and feeds other downstream water bodies. Proposed car and bus parking lots in the plans indicate a number of cars and buses that is many times the total number of cars that drive down Blind Pond Road every day. How can they assert that there will be no increase in traffic on the small winding road when the proposed parking on the site alone would double the amount of the traffic on this road? Furthermore, there are no sidewalks or streetlights in the area, and the drainage should start right at the edge of the road, so there is no safe place to walk out of the path of traffic. The property is currently mostly unlit. Light pollution alone, remaining streetlights to the roads, and the site would have significant impact on wildlife, as well as permanently altering the rural quality of life. That was what made the area attractive to all of the current residents. Prior to the board approving any change of use or population density or any development that will create additional use of water, discharge from leaching fields, impacts on wildlife corridors, light pollution, traffic, or any other potential adverse effects to the neighboring property, wildlife. For the town of Tustin as a whole, the entire impact of the project must be fully and completely evaluated by unbiased experts and not left to the applicants to self-certify. The board must hold the developers to the highest standard of transparency and scrutiny for potential problems and adverse effects that might arise from the development and require a full, unbiased environmental impact review of all aspects of the development. The board, and by extension, the town of Tustin, will be held responsible for correction of any negative impacts on surrounding properties that result from this development for the immediate and foreseeable future and expose themselves and the town of Tustin the possibility of long and costly litigation now and in the future when any of these adverse effects might surface. Thank you.
This letter, it's one of the letters that I printed out for you.
I have it somewhere else.
This letter is one of the letters I was.
Members of the board, my name is Dan Aladrouche, and we're homeowners of 251 Blind Pond Road, and we absolutely love living there, and we love the, the character of the area. And we're concerned also that the fundamental character of the area might be profoundly affected and changed. And we're also concerned about the things listed by previous commenters, water quality, water usage, light pollution, sound pollution. We live right through the woods from one of the smaller camps, and so we're able to sort of witness firsthand the difference between kind of off-season and on-season changes in traffic and noise and so forth. And, you know, you're sitting on your deck and the base comes pumping through the woods and, you know, but we're good neighbors. But as that scales up, it really does change the whole nature of the place. So, we're strongly in favor of independent assessments of all these things mentioned by the previous. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve Dipento, 106 Blind Pond Road. I'll keep it brief. Obviously, I agree with everything that's been said. I've been on, on Blind Pond Road since 1971, where you used to be tenants. And since 2001, I've been an owner at that same property. And I can't find any positive reason to allow this school to go through. They call it a retreat. Retreats, my understanding, you know, at a time, in a couple of weeks. This is gonna be obviously a school, not a retreat. So, I would like to have you take that into consideration and deny this retreat. Thank you very much.
Anybody over here? Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me that opportunity to speak for two minutes. My name is Abraham Sancer. I am the property manager and the caretaker of where the Yeshiva retreat was for the last 10-plus seasons, and I would just like to go over what I observed here over the last 10-plus years.
And where is that?
That is in the town of Woodbury.
Okay.
They are coming to me the last 10 seasons, starting from the staff down, the very respectable people, the respectful students, the rest of the staff, from the higher down to lower, and when we turn the student body, it's just as respectful, respectable to the staff members and everybody else over there. About the boys, they're young teenagers growing into young adults, trying to teach them the right way, how to grow up safe and honest. We are young men. Safety over there on the property, anything that is brought up to their attention that could be better done is always no problem, whether it's the extra smoke detectors, carb and stuff, anything that I've brought up to them. Safety and have to force with hygiene, they're always there to do anything possible for the students and the staff as well. As much as I don't want to see them leaving my property, I owe it to them to say the truth of how they have been on my property, always well behaved. There's no such thing as, you know, drinking there or drugs. I was never brought up. If they are ever making a public thing, if there's, let's say, a goodbye party at the end of the season, always give a phone call into the town until, what, I'm allowed to have music if it's till 9:00 o'clock, and they always have their rules. Anything that had to get done there with upgrading the property, always taking that with a permit and always do things the right way. Thank you for your time.
Can I just respond? Naomi Holoch. Again, I would just like to say, I don't think there is any question, nobody's questioning decency and respectability of the people involved in the project, but none of that answers the environmental impact.
I have people ask me to say something.
We had an issue before.
Hello, my name is John Schlott. I've boarded a property that we're talking about tonight, on the first house down through the dam. We, my wife and I, and we raised our children there. We've been there 35 years. If we had a moment of silence here, if we had hours of silence here, that's what we have now. I, I don't see how the quality of our life is gonna change based on that alone, with, due to the traffic, the people on the roads. It's huge. You talked about septic and drainage. Don Maine, I bought my house from Don Maine. He used to be the caretaker of Wellmet. He told me that because the leach fields were so granular, you dig down a couple of feet, it's all clay, like mentioned before. So, the water stays up high, that's why it's very wet in our area. He told me that they had dug under that road into the piece of land right that borders my property and uses that as a leach field because the other one wasn't significant enough. I would like to know if that is true. You know, it was told to me, but I do remember that. You know, it was told to me, but I do remember that. We've seen two catastrophic floods in the last fifteen years. The water's gone over the dam, around the dam, right down the road in front of our house. You know, if water was up to our foundation, it could have went. If the dam would have went, we probably would not be here. So when it comes to septic and drainage, we are, we are impacted more than anybody. We're directly below that dam in the property. I just hope for for me and my neighbors, I'm speaking just with my wife and myself, but everybody's going to be impacted by this. It's a huge change. How is the, it just seems like we're being, the quality of our life is going to change drastically. I don't see how the positives of this at all are good. In reality, whatever happens, I hope you guys do the best that you can to make the proper decisions for the citizens that have lived here for many years. We mind our own business, we're quiet. Maybe I'm not involved in a lot of stuff, but it's peaceful, it's quiet. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Senior Board Members. My name is Doug Goddard of the Forty-Five Pond Road. It's a quiet residential neighborhood. I've been there thirty years. And I don't see there's any way that the proposed project is not going to have adverse impact on the community. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Patrick Harrison and I live at two-four-four Blind Pond Road. I've been there for the last twenty so odd years. And when I initially lived there, you would see a lot of people there. You would see a lot of traveling and stuff like that. But over the years, many of the buildings on that property were not being used. And actually, at one point in the last ten years, one of the buildings actually was tore down. The thing is, in the recent use of that property, the main building has been somewhat used, but all the other buildings have not been used. And the only time they go into them is to actually make a few changes or anything like that. And that right now, in the last five years, they have only been up with five or so cars, maybe ten at most. But they haven't been in any of the other buildings. And recently, in the last two years since COVID hit, they haven't been in any of the buildings except for maybe a car or two. And all the property is in disrepair. They've only cut the grass once or twice in a year. And many of the buildings haven't been in at all. I, this is, I just want to point this out to the board because I honestly believe that this property is in disrepair and that needs to be taken into account with your decision. Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished planning board members and fellow friends of the community. My name is Pacey Bastin. I live in Brooklyn. It took me three hours to get here. Allow me to share with you a picture of my family. My son, Lygish, is the seventh in our family to attend this fine institution. As parents, and some of us as grandparents already, all know the importance of high-quality education that we want to give our children. For years, education consisted of the three important Rs: reading, writing, and arithmetic. But in today's challenging times, it's not enough to educate the mind. We must also develop the character in our children in order for them to become upstanding citizens and assets to our society. With this in mind, the school puts extra effort into their Rs: teaching, resilience, responsibility, reliability, refinement, relevance, righteousness, and most important, respect. Which is professionally run by our esteemed, be mindful of our Rs, Rabbi Rubin. Therefore, I am here today to express my support for the school's proposal to purchase a property for their summer school program. I've had the privilege of visiting the school on multiple occasions. Beautiful campus and the care and attention given to maintain it in a clean and orderly manner have impressed me. School takes great pride in ensuring that the school is a maclay at all times and that students are well behaved and respectful of their surroundings. I have no doubt that this same level of care and attention will be given to the summer school program and the property it will be held on. I understand the initial concern of the neighbors are usually about potential noise, garbage, boys wandering the neighborhood. Therefore, I feel confident I can assure you that Rabbi Rubin and his exceptional staff will work closely with the community to ensure that any potential issues are addressed and resolved in a timely manner. In conclusion, I urge the planning board to approve the school's proposal to purchase a property for the summer school program. I have complete confidence in Rabbi Rubin and the school staff to manage a program in a responsible and respectful manner. And I believe that it will be a positive addition to your community. Thank you for your time and I'm very pleased.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Spiegel. I live in the town of Ramapo and I'm a teacher at this school at the Yeshiva for fifteen years now. And my experience is, as we said before, when come as before, the students are very well contained, the school at all the times. If you would ask anybody who lives in the neighborhood in town of Ramapo, where the school is located during the month, the ten months, the whole season, not in the summertime. You will never see a student walking even in the streets. They have the dormitory over there. They're never outside the front, but the neighbors over there have a very, very good experience with this school. And the place is very well kept. You never see garbage around. You never see dirt. When we are in the summertime in the town of Woodbury, you will never see any dirt on the floors. You will never see the boys going out in the road. They're always inside. And that's the nature of the school that they study most of the hours of the day. Also about the parking, about the staff, it is a very minimal staff. I mean, you will never see people here, the members of the community were concerned about ten cars. I don't even know, I don't think there's even ten cars at most at this time of the school. I mean, you will still have a very minimal traffic going on because it's a very small staff. It's not a big staff, even though it's proposed for whatever number of students the proposal is, but the staff is a minimal staff. And the community, while we're in the months during the winter in town of Ramapo, the neighbor town of Woodbury, the town, the people around there, everybody was very happy with the, with the school students, with the staff. And as they said before, there's people on the staff, Rabbi Rubin and all the people that take care of the school, always, any neighbor has any issue. They will always, right away will be, if any of any concern, it was done right away. Therefore, I ask, and I think it will be a plus for the community and a positive thing for the community over here. And I urge you, the board, to approve this proposal for the school. Thank you very much.
Steve Depento again, one oh six Blind Pond Road. I haven't heard one reason how this would benefit the residents and the owners in the area. I don't deny or doubt that their students are nice people. They want to raise them in a nice way. But it doesn't show us that it's going to improve our property's value, the quality of living. There's nothing about having a school there that has never been there, anything like that. That's going to well benefit us. So with all due respect, once again, I shouldn't be denied. Thank you.
Crystal, you have children, potential and powerful? Yeah, does she want to speak? She sent us a letter, but she's.
Yes, I'd like to speak if I may. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me a chance to zoom in. I just want to say it's really nice to finally, after thirty-eight years, meet some of my neighbors on Blind Pond Road. I live at two-seven-seven Blind Pond Road and I have since nineteen eighty-five. I'm extremely concerned about this proposal. As everybody has said, probably a lot more eloquently than I can, it's going to completely change the character of our neighborhood. And I, I remember when it was the Goddard Riverside Community Center, when they would bring up group, groups of kids from Harlem to do outward bound programs on the weekends. And it was great. They'd come up on an occasional weekend, they'd set up ropes and, and it was great. And then they, and then they'd leave. And then the Gergi Foundation had it for many years. And it was very, very sporadic. In fact, the people, I don't know if they took a vow of silence, but you never heard anybody even talk. And this is what we were used to. And this is what, how we've lived. And this is why we love it up there. I'm extremely concerned. I was reading the, the Tustin Comprehensive Plan. And unless I'm misreading it, my understanding is that we are zoned as a residential development area. And only, only with, with room for essential commercial activities. I don't see a summer camp as an essential activity. It might feel essential to the people who want to buy it and run it, but it's not essential to our neighborhood. It's not something that any of us will be using. Also, in order to be granted the special use permit, the location is not supposed to have an oversaturation of this, of the same type endeavor. And we have another camp right down the end of the road, which is on a much bigger space and is much more secluded and much more appropriate than this location, which is our intersection, the historic intersection of Beaver Brook. And it just doesn't fit. Also, they're not supposed to receive a special use permit. And I'm reading this from the town's own papers. That if it shall not result in undue adverse effect on adjacent properties or change the character of the neighborhood, it will completely change the character of the neighborhood. I'm very concerned about the dam. I have spoken to the DEC repeatedly about it. I know this has been addressed at some of your meetings. But the town was told in twenty-eleven, as was the Gergi Foundation, that the dam was out of compliance and dangerous. Nothing was done. Everybody knew about it. Nothing was done. And now that new people want to buy the property, it's come up again. And I heard the prospective owners say at a past meeting, we will make sure that everything's taken care of. We will spend whatever we have to spend to make sure the dam is in compliance for as long as it's needed. We will work on until it is. Well, I don't know how long that's going to be and I don't know what the oversight is. I don't know who will oversee that they're actually doing it. When I asked the DEC what they would do, they said, we'll send them a strongly worded letter that that is their enforcement to getting the dam fixed. I'm downstream of the dam. As one of the, I think it was Mr. Schott said, we have had two catastrophic floods in the area. I am set back from the road. I am downstream from the dam. One of the floods completely blew out my driveway and the culvert that you have to cross to get to my property. And I would be trapped at my house with no way to get to my house. I'm very concerned about the dam and dam failure and dam oversight. I don't think that that's being addressed adequately. And the other issues that I just wanted to bring out and other people have as well, I'm very concerned about sound amplification. I'm very concerned about lighting pollution. And I'm very concerned about signage. I'm really worried about changing the character of our beautiful historic area. Like I said, I have been a second homeowner there. I was twenty-two years old when my husband and I couldn't afford to buy a house when we got married in the city. And we bought our country house. And I have raised two children there. One of them is now a doctor. And we love it there. We go there. We are now spending at least a week a month at our second home that we've managed and scraped and held on to all these years, just to have this peace when we finally retired. And I'm just devastated to think of what's going to happen. And I'm not concerned at all about the nature of the children attending the camp. I cannot imagine that they wouldn't be lovely children. That is not an issue. I've worked with children my entire career and I have no problem with the children. And I can't imagine anybody else does either. That is not the issue. The issue is the changing, the whole nature of the neighborhood, changing our way of life, putting something here that just does not fit in that spot. And I really hope that you'll consider everything that everybody said. And I want to thank everybody for doing your research and bringing these great points to the board. Thank you.
Everybody else on Zoom wish to speak, Krista?
That is a bold little question. I've got about seventeen participants on Zoom. I, does anybody else wish to speak? You are able to unmute yourself. Or you can raise your hand and I can unmute you. I see you're laughing.
Anybody in here wish to speak? Not a second time, but a first time? Yes, sir.
Richard Norton, twenty-eight, Capitaine Road, Narate, New York. And I've heard some great information and arguments about this. And I just wanted to remind the board again how important the environmental impacts, necessity of investigating the environmental impact of this whole thing. You see, it's got to be done, not just the first block, all of them, completely gone through. And I have some concerns about camp in a quiet area. I think there's a, in my, my experience with any of these kinds of camps, any kind of role, is loudspeakers, lighting, and environmental impact that way. That will affect people's standard of living.
Could I say one thing very quickly? I know it's the second time and I've.
I can, no, this is your third time.
Well, I don't think so. But anyway, I just want to say, I don't think anyone that I've heard here tonight thinks that they're going to have people coming in and rampaging around and setting off fireworks and shooting at deer or anything like that. The main concern here that I hear is just by being there with that many people, you've got an irrevocable impact that is going to affect everyone who's here and everyone who's coming into here. So please, keep that in mind. This is not a vendetta by anybody. We are worried about what's there now and protecting what's there now so that everybody can continue to enjoy it.
You have responses to these things? You've been taking a lot of notes. I have some questions.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Stephen Barchild, side of Patrick Mazel, I'm the attorney for the applicant. A couple of things. My understanding is, I think that you've adopted a neck deck already. Am I correct about that? I think so. So I want to address a number of points that have been raised. Some of them are matters that are within your jurisdiction. Some of them will be matters that will have to be addressed by the Department of Health. But adequacy of wells, adequacy of sewage treatment is Department of Health issues. Certainly, if there is to be an approval, requiring all of the appropriate permits, approvals and analyses are important. Nobody wants to have any kind of activity that will pollute someone's existing wealth, will cause them to have been well contaminated by any kind of sewage or septic. So all of those things have to be addressed as a matter of being able to utilize the site. I heard a lot about possibility of there being a new battle endangered species. My understanding is, is that there's not really very much if any significant new development that's occurred, that the land that's basically undisturbed is going to remain undisturbed. And so, at least in terms of an overall impact on this property, we're. wherever there is wildlife habitat on this property, it's going to continue to be on this property. If there's concern about lighting, um you certainly have the ability to look at a lighting plan to make sure that whatever lighting, if there is any additional lighting to be installed, that the lighting is aimed downwards so that there is no light pollution. These days, that's a pretty standard item for most planning boards to include in any application. Uh, that would be reviewed. Certainly, no one wants to create an increase in light pollution. Um, I was reading just the other day that around the world uh we are losing the ability to see stars at the rate of about ten percent a year. Um, and that just keeps on going because of just people being everywhere. Well, this little spot, nobody has the desire to change the dark sky that's there, particularly during the summer months. Uh, again, as far as any need for wetland delineation, I if there was a potential new disturbance of the wetlands, uh then that would certainly be appropriate, but my understanding is is that there is no proposal to uh change uh any of the wetland areas or intrude upon them, so there's no need for a new wetland delineation. As far as the um issues that have been raised regarding um uh the change in the character of the neighborhood. Um, I think that it is important to stress that this is certainly something that occurs during the summer months as the principal use of the property. And that there is a reason for the people who spoke on behalf of the applicant describing what happens at the school. These are not boys who are going outside and recreating in the outdoors by and large. By and large, they are indoors and they are studying even during the summertime. So while there will be a significant number of people on site, they will be indoors. And the character of the community, I don't believe, is going to be affected by people being there indoors studying. And that's basically what they're going to be doing. Um, it doesn't change the nature of the community. It doesn't make noise. It doesn't have people running around. They are not coming and going in vehicles all the time. It's not going to change radically or even significantly, the fact that this will be a quiet area. And I respect the people who have come forward and I also respect the fact that they've made it very clear that they're not here to oppose these uh this applicant because the applicant happens to be Orthodox Jewish. I'm sure that they would come forward and say the same kinds of things, that this was a Buddhist retreat. If it was a Catholic retreat, it wouldn't matter. My point is that addressing the issue that they raised about the character of the neighborhood, you have people that are quiet, that are indoors, that are not going to be doing significantly different things in terms of affecting the environment, both in terms of noise, frequency use, people coming and going. I don't think that there is going to be any kind of significant um impact on the character of the neighborhood. And that of course also goes for traffic, that there'll be people that'll be there, they're staying there, they're not coming and going uh significant numbers every day. The um, as far as the dams concerned, this is one thing that I I must say I find a little perplexing because I certainly respect and understand that there are neighboring property owners who are downstream who have real concerns about the viability of this dam and the danger to their properties if this dam is not maintained. Well, how do you think it's going to get maintained? It hasn't been maintained by any of the private property owners. This one is committed and did a study to identify exactly what work was done, what needed to be done and has said straight up, we will take care of this problem, has done the analysis of the work that is required and is ready to actually address what apparently is being a longstanding problem, one of concern. And if I live downstream, I'd be really worried about the fact that there has been two floods and nobody apparently, including this foundation that was there using it periodically, ever put their money and their resources into curing that problem. Well, this applicant is committing to this board and to this neighbors, to these neighbors that yes, this will be taken care of with a properly documented engineering analysis, which was done this fall. And I assume that the board has received a copy of that document. If not, we'll be happy to provide it to you. Um, I think many people may have watched me copiously taking notes. I take seriously public comments that come out. I'm a big believer in this is the most important function of a democracy is that people should be able to come out and not only speak, but be heard, be heard by this board, also be heard by the app. And so I can tell you that I listened and I took notes as best as I could, right? I took notes and I'm trying to address every single point that I heard made this evening so that everyone understands that this applicant and this lawyer takes these things quite seriously. Um, I don't know if I hit everything. I certainly tried to hit everything uh from community character to traffic to wildlife, to wetlands, to light pollution. Um, I and to indicate to you that I believe that all of these matters uh have been and can be properly addressed. I do want to come back to um septic and water to just say in one more time that there will be no approval for whatever is required for this property unless the county Department of Health is satisfied that all of those things are properly studied and property owners are protected, including those that have wells nearby. So if there are any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I hope that that addresses the comments, at least that I heard this evening.
Um, Joel Rose Bell for the applicant I want to add. So we started this process oh um many months ago. And at our first meeting, right, it was new, we had a few people from the public show up additionally, the late um Ed Jackson of West Mary was the chairman, I think, also lives right, right over there. And he himself, you know, brought up certain issues. Um, members of the board, board of issues, let's say our first proposal, we showed a, a swimming pool with a eight foot fence enclosure and people in the neighborhood brought up that, you know, it's going to be right near the road. It's, you know, it's going to change the character of the, of the area. Um, we spent time, resources, money to find a, a different spot, although that the first spot would have been ideally, more ideal, probably cheaper for us. And we changed it in subsequent plans to move it, you know, to, to, to make it more secluded, to be far away from, from, from the, from the road. It shouldn't, you know, no area. Same thing is regarding the dam. The dam is something that we brought up to, to the, to the current owners and as he explained, I mean, the current owners didn't do anything. We already um filed, we got them to file, we're not the owners yet, but we hired them, Rick Woid was our dam engineer is actually on Zoom. And he did this whole analysis and assessments and um filed it with the DUC. Up until now, the DC had no idea, there was no um the dam safety plan, the DC had no idea that in case, God forbid, the, the dam breaches, who's going to be flooded? Now they know that. We did that study already. So and and we did a study and we know that it's only called uh, uh class B, um, which is no, no lots of life is possible, even if the whole dam um just goes away. It's the only property damage that that can happen, which is not something you want to happen, but currently if there's a hurricane this hurricane season, it might happen, God forbid. And we are ready to go to the next step and we, you know, um, which is to, to come up with the proper plan and fixes. The dam was not built according to DC specs. It has to be, it has to be fixed. And once we're in there, we will, we will, we will do it. We have no choice. We will do it. We want to do it and we will do it. And we're, we're ready to work along with the community to, to make sure that we not, we don't change the character of the community. That's not our intention. Um, a- as, as he explained, and I, I can say this, this is a learning camp where eighty percent of the day will be between praying, learning, there will, there, there is recreation. That's where we're going to have a swimming pool and it will be boys playing ball a little bit. We're not going to have major um leagues uh stuff. But there will be recreation. We are not going to have any outdoor um public address systems where we'll be announcing, okay, change of shit, go here, go there, like you see sometimes in, 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 in other camps and sports camps and in girls camps where there are many groups and bunks and you constantly have to announce what's going on or phone calls. The boys will be contained, contained in, in, in either, either in the lunchroom or in the synagogue or, 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 or in the classrooms or in their rooms. So if, I, I'm not saying we're, we're probably not going to do it, but if something though maybe be um speakers inside, inside the room. But there's no plan to have any um outdoor loudspeakers. Regarding the downward lighting, we, we indicated that on the plan already because we, somebody brought it up that all lighting will be downward. I run a camp of liberty and we know, we know that this is already, you know, for years where, where we're doing that. Other than that, I mean, a current owner that's there, they don't sell the property, they can technically um rent it out to a camp without needing anything and just continue their existing use. Although they use it sporadically, nothing keeps them from bringing out this weekend two hundred people and, and, and having a, a retreat there or do whatever they want. It's their property. They have property rights in this country, can't restrict that. They can, I don't know if all you know, they will have this weekend two hundred people. So it's not something that we're, we're trying to really change something or that will be worse off when, when we're there. I think it will be better off, we're only going to be using it for, for the summer and uh the, 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 the lights, even the downward lights will be off approximately ten months. And the, that's that. Um, that's why, um, what, I, I think that you, you've heard from the public. I think we should, you know, close the public hearing and, 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 and move on. We've been, we've been here in front of the board. We've covered all, you know, we did the, the, the sequel, the, the, the short form and then the long form and, and we did all that and um. I hope I covered everything and uh thank you.
Uh, before the public comment section was involved, I wanted to just read, replay a personal note. My father has a house in Swan Lake. Uh, is about three quarters of mile from Camp Torres, which is a similar educational camp. There is due to their, my, my father has a four hundred foot deep well. This year, we had to install a six thousand dollar system to filter arsenic out of the water. The reason there's arsenic, we've lived there for over eighty years that we've, we ran a bungalow colony. We had the Board of Health test the water all the time. We, in the past, we never had arsenic. We did a directional flow test to determine where the arsenic was coming from. It's coming from the camp. It's not produced by the camp, but since the camp depletes the water table so far during the summer, water travels from fishers that it never traveled from before. So it's like you're tapping a whole new area that hasn't had water running through it for millions of years. And the water that's drawn out of the well now contains arsenic. So we have four canisters this high that have chemicals in them that need to be maintained. There's metering. This is just so we can drink the water. This is what happens and if something like that happens, our well's only sixty five feet deep. It's not going to take much before we have no water. But in the event that there are adverse effects, once the camp is there, there'll be no review, there'll be no way to mitigate those effects. Our alternative will be to sue the town. That's our, you know, everyone within I mean, it's, it's, that's our only alternative. Because the town granted permission without a full EIS. That as far as the sewer overflow, it's not sewage. What it is, is it's nitrate concentration. The uh, what is on the site plan is an unspecified leaching field. There's two of them directly across from Jason's property and uh our property that are unspecified leaching fields. There might be something old, they might be something working. There certainly could be something expanded on, but they're uphill from the wetlands from Ten Mile River and from our pond, which goes into the Delaware River. Uh, the soil is not permeable in that area. It's muddy. It's been muddy for years. I can't drive a truck or a tractor across my lawn. Uh, how is the effluent from these leaching fields not going to go into the water table? You know, in build a leaching field, you're adding sand on top or permeable material on top of impermeable material. That's what allows the leachive bill to per. But if you, if there's too much effluent coming out of the leaching field, it just runs downstream. Downstream is the wetlands and Mile River, our pond and our well. So who would be responsible if that happens? Or I should say when that happens? That's it.
Okay, at this point, I take a motion to close the public hearing.
One more person.
He spoke too far. Yeah, we can go on all night adding comments.
See environmental scientists in the room.
Yeah, it's nice. Go ahead.
Or for the Parks Department, uh it was professionally, I mean, just something to add as well that I think should be noted is that it's not simply this the acreage that's being constructed on, but as many people have said, it's the effects that ripple out from that, whether it's the people, whether it's affluence. The plan that we've been presented is not the plan that the environment is getting. There's a lot of potentially no new species in the area. There's a complete lack of actual reporting done on the site itself because it's large, just because all hundred and seventy plus acres aren't being developed. It's a very abstract thing to say that it can't have an impact on the environment. It's really important to do a full assessment of the property or else we simply can't know the impact being done. Regardless of the footprint of the construction, it's clear that it have a big ripple out beyond the footprint of the physical building. That's just inevitable. And it's not something that there's any historic precedent from because the camp has been used so sparsely for decades. Nature has taken over that space. Other people have mentioned the buildings have gone follow, have been abandoned. Nature has encroached in the space. Nature works in tracks, nature works in areas, nature will recede because of the presence of people. They don't have to be standing right next to it, effluents from the water output, the sound, the light. The simple presence of people will change their relationship with the site and with nature. So it's really important to, if for anything else, just to know what's there. There's no DC reports on the lake there, there's no DC reports on the marsh there. There's really no evidence, no one's looked through the site with any actual noteworthy assessment for decades. So especially because the use has changed so far over the many, many years that it's gone between hands that we at least know we're dealing with here.
Thank you. Take a motion to close the public hearing. One second. Okay. All right. Okay, we have Pharaoh, Kenny.
Hi.
Becker.
Let's worry.
Bermuda, she's here on still, right?
She can't show.
She can't hold on. Oh yeah. Not leaves. Uh, I'm a guy, Peter.
I.
John.
Hi.
But did that change?
When the executive order expired as an adopted new legislation.
Okay, we'll open our regular meeting with pledge of swearing. Everybody has received their copy of the minutes, I trust. And anything you wish to see corrected in them?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Take a motion.
Thanks, Peter.
John, second. Okay. We'll take a call. Mike.
I'm staying since I was not.
Brian. You want to abstain too?
Yes, Brandon.
Brandon, okay. You need to meet Barry.
Of saying.
I'm a guy, Peter.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Well, you can approve or not approve, I don't care. We do it next month. So the minutes will be left for approval for next month. In correspondence, I received the email back from Cassandra Dronstone county planning that they do not have any jurisdiction over this particular project. It's not within 500 feet of a town border. It's not on a road that triggers anything that they are interested in rendering a decision and it's up to the town. I also received a letter from Joe Carreri, an email today. I, Joseph Carreri, am writing this email to inform you that for personal reasons, I'm resigning from the planning board. That's a today, January 23, 2023. Thank you for letting me be part of the planning board, Joseph Carreri. So I want to thank Joe for his service over the years and sorry to see him go. So that's the end of correspondence I have. Now, what, how we're going to address this.
Sensible borders, but you know, you've got to digest what was presented. Might be a lot of, a lot of commentary.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, we've had a rather active public hearing. We'll be looking at those, those comments and address this next month. I think this client has some items here that he would put in the resolution that we'll be looking at of points that will be to protect the individuals and the town. So at this point, we're tabling it for this month. I have a motion from anybody to table it or any other motion you want to make?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Secondary?
Second.
Okay. All right, we'll go through our little things. I'm going to put eye on the table. John.
I.
Peter.
Hi.
Barry.
Hi.
Brendan.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Okay, so we will revisit this in our February meeting. I don't think we have to continue in the public hearing. Any comment by board members they wish to bring to the public? Our next meeting reminder is when?
February 29.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Under business, we have no other motion.
There was a question before for new business.
The business has to be presented two weeks ahead of time. But you can bring it up. What is the kind of business are you proposing?
It's a resubdivision or every something.
Okay, it has to be presented to, two weeks before the meeting. So if you present it now, we can look at it at the February meeting. Do you have plans for everyone or you just have one set? See what we got.
Orders involves is my parcel property, Kenny knows where it is, 52 and County Road 25. The parcel I own there, one of his own, five. My father and stepmother in the 1980s. I, when my father passed on, I asked my stepmother to give me nine plus acres over in the woods. She gave it to me and, and then when I, when she passed on, I inherited the main parcel and Kenny advised me, I believe, to add that parcel back for easier, for lower tax. And that was it. And what I want to do now is take this nine plus acres back and give it to my son. So I want to reset.
Do it along the same lines of this.
Exactly.
You don't need to come to the planning board. You just need to draw a deed for your son and it will come apart.
Is that a survey or anything? Yeah, I'll go, that's something good. Oh, I'll do that. But you have the deed, I can say the description, why don't you follow that exactly, these lines? Okay. It'll come back apart and you just file a deed and it breaks it apart. But I want to count it, you again, so. When it gets to the real property, they'll split it up and give the others back. It shouldn't let you grow. All right. So you're done, you're going to have to cut that this month. You're sold now. Thanks a lot.
Things happen. Anybody want a second?